Call this meeting to order, Commissioner Langley.
Our gracious Father, we do come to you today in prayer, Lord. We just pray, Father, that the things that are done tonight will bring on glory to you. Father, just be with the board. Give us peace of mind for decisions that need to be made in the future. Father, we just pray your blessing be upon this evening. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Commissioner Lee, Commissioner Marquetti, Commissioner Barrera.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Yep.
Commissioner Grace.
Here.
Commissioner Northrup.
Yep.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yep.
And Commissioner Langley.
Here.
All right. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're going to add everybody on your table. You have a memo from the Cass County Conservation District. We're going to add that to new business number nine. And Charity Green is here to speak on that. Also, the master plan draft you'll see is number one under new business. We're going to leave that there, but we're going to have the McKenna present it. And we'd like to put, I'd like to put them replace, not replace Market One, but put them above Market One. So it'll be the master plan, then Market One, then letter accommodation, letter accommodation, letter accommodation, because we have to get McKenna out of here because we're paying them. So the quicker they do it, the less money we owe. Makes perfect sense to me.
Support.
All right.
The state has been budgeted.
Okay. Commissioner Northrup, approval of the agenda.
With amended agenda, I motion that we approve.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as amended. A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The agenda passes. Public comment on agenda items only, and it's limited to three minutes per person, where the floor is now open for public comment. Do we have any public comments?
My name is Roger, my name is Roger Boyer. Thank you. Sorry. My name's Roger Boyer. I'm a resident of Porter Township. I live over by, actually by Dr. Lollis Park. I just want to talk about the budget just for a minute. I'm very concerned about the issues of the budget and so many demands. I realize we only have so much money. You have only so much money to administer. I believe you need to step back and look at your, your overall budget, your overall departments. Figure out, and I know it's easy for me as an outsider to say this, I get that, but I have a budget for myself. I'm on a fixed income. I'm retired, in case you didn't guess. Look at your budget. What is essential? What is it that you are required to do? You're required to maintain records, county clerk. You're required to pay your bills, the treasurer. You're required to provide law and order and keep prisoners if they so occur, the sheriff, and prosecute them, the prosecutor. And I'm sure there's many other things that you're required to do that I don't even realize. I won't pretend. But there are a lot of other things you don't need to do. And I know this is not a popular view. I don't think we need a county taxi service. I don't think we need to be supporting a county, I'm not sure the right word, the senior, senior home, the county, the, the home on Hospital Street. I can't think of the name of it. I'm sorry.
Senior home.
I'm not sure that we need to be supporting ambulances. I don't know that. I think that's a township duty, not a county duty. And there are other things. So I hope you will look at your budget and be more stringent in what you give out money for. I know we have a health board. I go to the health board meetings faithfully. Probably one of the few citizens do that. I've done it for almost three years. And I know they want more money. They probably need it. But do they need it? Do they need all the fluff that they do? Do they need all the public relations and so forth? So I'm just asking you to think about it. And, and go on. Is that, thank you for, thank you for.
Thanks, Roger.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none. We'll go on to the approval of the minutes.
I move we approve the minutes as written.
That work. Have a, have a motion and a support to approve the minutes. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And our next one is presentations, so we'll go on to the master plan. So McKenna, if you want to guide us a little bit here, we'd appreciate it.
She's from, from McKenna. That's not her name.
And thank you for the warm welcome.
I forgot her name, too.
She's worked there a long time, so we can say, we can call her McKenna.
No, my name is Rebecca Harvey. And it's nice to see you all again. So yes, I'm here. I spoke with Ambrosia. I knew this was on your agenda, and we agreed that it might be helpful to you if I was here in the event that you had any questions. But let me just make a few comments that you might find helpful. So the planning commission met on July 23rd and concluded their work on development of the draft master plan and accepted it for purposes of moving it forward and initiating the adoption process. And under Michigan law, that begins with sending it to the commission and requesting your approval to distribute it out to the review agencies that are required to review it prior to the public hearing. So this, this process is set forth in the Michigan Planning Act. And so once the planning commission has a draft that, that they're feeling is, you know, that, that they've read through, that, that they are satisfied with, then they send it to you. Your job is to accept it and authorize, if you will, its distribution to adjacent communities and utility companies. And, you know, that list is, is also set forth in the statute. And then those reviewing bodies have 63 days to review it. And at the conclusion of that review period, the planning commission holds a public hearing. So, and then it comes to you for adoption. So this is just the first step in that adoption process. So throughout that entire adoption process, there are times for comments, revisions, rounds of revisions prior to adoption. This is just beginning that. So I certainly don't expect that you have particular questions or comments at this stage. The plan was provided to you at the conclusion of last month's meeting, so you've probably had it close to a month. But honestly, your only required or requested and/or required step at this point is to say, we are satisfied with it to go out for review. You will have more opportunities to, to provide comment on it. So it's not suggesting that you find it adoptable, but rather that you find it ready for review. Now with that said, if there's anything about the, the actual draft document that you would like me to comment on, I'm happy to do that or to answer questions on the process. Happy to do that.
Any questions? I see none.
I've seen it, ma'am. And what we're doing tonight, we're not voting on it tonight. We're just going to move it forward to our business meeting. And at that point, we'll vote on it to approve it, or like you said.
To move it forward.
To move it forward.
Perfect.
And between now and then, we might have questions. So we'll probably just reach out to you.
Okay.
Through Ambrosia, or if you could leave the interim administrator your contact information, we'll get with you.
Okay. And if you decide that at your, I know this is the committee of the whole meeting, but if you decide at your business meeting that you're wanting me in attendance at that meeting, too, that is part of our contract. And all you have to do is let me know, and I'll be there.
All right, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. All right. Next on our presentations, Market One Annual Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. Provided an annual report for everyone here and brought some extras. If anyone in the audience would like a few, then as well. So also wanted to pair this with giving you an annual update on the work we're doing as an organization, both in Cass and Van Buren Counties. But I'll start a little wide, go organization wide. And as presentation goes on, I'm going to also pare it down to be just Cass County updates, so you'd know exactly the work we've been doing here as well. So as an organization in 2021, we pivoted. If you remember back then, there was a lot of money that was coming down from the federal government. And we knew that we needed to get in line to make sure that the communities here in southwest Michigan could pull that money down. And one of the things we know is that communities that have full staff, so we're talking about cities, large cities, large counties in the east side with much larger budgets than we have in these rural communities, they have full dedicated economic and community development staff. This is what they do is go and pull this money down. And so we knew we needed to scale up to be able to pull this money down. And since then, we pulled $34 million in. As projects, the projects are for us, working with companies to expand, attracting new companies into the community, other projects that might be retention based. That's what we mean by a project announcement. And since 2016, organizations helped create 1,284 jobs and retain almost 2,000 jobs. We've had almost over $2 billion of capital investment and $2.25 billion altogether. This includes the nuclear plant, which is absolutely a game changer for southwest Michigan with the jobs, the taxes, but also the amount of power that we're going to be able to put into our grid and give us actual grid reliability is really important. Over the last year, organization wide, 128 jobs. We've helped create, ushered in $24 million of investment and a $48 million economic impact overall. And the pipeline, and the reason the pipeline's important, so if anyone's ever owned a business, once you got the projects announced, you certainly hope there's some other projects and business behind it that's waiting for you to be able to get. And that's what this is. These are the projects that are coming down that we are actively working. So once you make an announcement, the heavy work's been pretty much done for an economic developer. At that point, you got the builders, you got the, the company who are writing the checks to build the buildings and buy the equipment. Our work is really heavily upfront in making sure the project gets to the finish line, at least for the announcement phase. And that's 227 jobs right now in the pipeline, 572 to be retained if everything goes as we plan. So wage impact of $28 million. And wage impact, the way we calculate it is that based on every job that's been retained or created, multiply it by the fourth quartile in wages, the lowest wages, and we multiply by that. And that way, it's a lower number. We're not saying, hey, everyone's making six figures, and we puff the numbers up. So we try to really be conservative with those numbers. And that's one year's worth of wages. And that gives you an idea of how much wages we're either keeping the community or bringing into the community. And that's important for secondary tertiary spending as well. Capital investment of $44.5 million. And that goes to set your tax base. And the economic impact of $73.18 million. And we're looking at it from community development standpoint. So we have a person dedicated to this part of the organization, supporting the, the two counties. And the MISTHA program, so this is the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, they have money that's dedicated to our region. And pretty much if you go and get the money, you've got a really good chance of doing it, of pulling that money in. The challenge is, it's community development block grant money. And if you're not familiar with that, this is the worst kind of grant money you can receive. It's heavily burdened. It has a lot of red tape. It's the worst of government. But it's real money. And if someone can help administer it, we can pull that money into our small communities who have not, who do not have the capacity to execute on these grants. So what we're able to do is, because our team is designed to do what the big counties and the big cities in the east that are doing, we're designed to scale up and help the small towns. We're going to help Edversburg and City Dua Jack with their applications. Marcellus is also applying, but we're going to be more in the backend support of helping them administer that if all goes as planned. So what we're seeing right now at a municipal level is almost $1.2 million. And I know Hope Anderson is also working on this program as well. And we hope to be able to help her out with the administration aspects of it, too. So this is real money, but it's not easy money. It takes real work to administer it. And what this will do is take a lot of the houses we see that are blighted in communities and be able to rehab them. You know, this, we're talking roofs, siding, windows, doors, make the exterior look nice again. I think the goal of all of us should be, if we can get some neighborhoods starting to look nice that are really tired, maybe we get some people taking pride in their homes, and we can start flipping it a little bit and getting some pride back in some of our small towns that are, some neighborhoods are just really tired. Office of Rural Prosperity, ORP, Rural Righteous Grant Program. So as we, what our, our goal of our organization is that we are keeping an idea on what are all the different programs at the state level. So when they come out, we know who has projects, who doesn't have projects, who's ready for a project. And what we've done is helped the village of Edversburg apply for this. So if all goes well, $60,000 in potential investment from this grant. And we helped them with their application. A business incubator project, so no announcements here. This is just, we're strictly in the concept phase of this. But we also know that most businesses we, we know of that have been successful and big corporations, Whirlpool started in a, in a garage, Stryker in Kalamazoo started in a basement. We need to see, how can we stimulate more people to start businesses up and support them from compliance, accounting, legal, you name it, all those aspects of it. So right now, Southwestern Michigan College has some open space. And what we're doing is talking with the college leadership on how we might be able to utilize that space to actually help get, start up more businesses. Just recently, I actually came from Holland because Holland, up their economic development organization, led an effort around this, doing smart zones. And we're able to start up the very same thing. So our goal here would be is to partner with the college on being able to maybe do something similar with the vague, with the space that's underutilized for them and create more entrepreneurship opportunities. Our grants team has taken a new approach. So what we've done in the past is we've said, we've got to be careful how much, we have 53 units of government, so we have to be careful how much we burden the community development team with this various asks. So we've been very specific, hey, you need to be an investor. You need to be one of these communities in Cass and Van Buren. And so that is specific to economic developments. But what we've done this time, and with our new community development director, I said, you got new ideas, I want to hear them. And her ideas was simple as this, is that let's utilize the grants, let's write ourselves in to these grants as administration and technical support staff to be able to fund and scale organization up further so we can deliver more services to our communities. So what we're finding is that even though we say, hey, we're here to write the application, what they're also saying to small towns and communities were, we have, we don't have the ability to execute it. So that was the challenge. And now what we're trying to do is get ourselves worked into the grant to help fund and scale this organization up to be able to bring more money into the county and support our communities. That's a new approach. It's more aggressive, a little bit of a risk on our team to be able to do it, but we think in the end we're going to win. And I think being aggressive to bring more money into Cass County is always going to be a good thing. Business development, business retention expansion, they're called BR and E in the economic development speak. This is where you go out and you actually talk to the existing businesses and figure out what's going on with your business. Are you planning to grow? What do you need to grow? What can we do to get, help you feel more comfortable taking the risk of a $50 million investment? And that's a lot of times what our job is to say, how do we get you comfortable with pulling the trigger on that investment? And that's what we've been doing, is working on this piece of it. So 50, 50 retention visits this last year. And that pipeline you saw earlier, where I will show you specifically for Cass, that comes out of these visits. So where we go out and say, okay, you know, Tom Langley, you're, you got a business here. What is, what is it that you're going to be doing this next year? Well, I'd love to put more machinery in. If I got more machinery in here, I would be able to put more orders in and then get better throughput. Well, Tom, how do we do it? Well, I don't really want to spend $10 million. Well, how can we help you get a grant? Or how can we help you with financing? Our job is to go back and solve that, for that problem. Some of our partners and programs you can see here is that we'll work with Industry 4.0. And so, okay, you know, if it's a deal where we need to help you with automation, understanding that, you know, we, we're going to do more through automation, you can get a grant to help do a study on that. Michigan Department of, of agricultural development, they have grants as well that we've brought in to help some of our agricultural based communities, our businesses, be able to expand and grow. Going Pro Talent Fund's another one. We're on a retention visit, and you tell me, okay, I've got the new equipment, but nobody knows how to work on it. You know, we don't have a Jim Lawrence anymore working on the maintenance floor. Well, we take some folks and we send them in to be able to get trained on, to learn hopefully a little bit of what Jim Lawrence knew when he was working full time. That's what Going Pro Talent Fund also does. Work on issues like housing and childcare and foreign trade zones. If you've not heard of one of these, but basically the way this works is, is that if you fly a piece of equipment in, and you're going to work on it and then fly it back out, you don't ever have to pay the duty on it if you're in a foreign trade zone. So that helps save cost on doing business along the way. It's allowed under federal law. There's a foreign trade zone in Bell Creek. I sit on that board representing Cass and Van Buren Counties. And if you want to start up one, so we're going to do one for knife making with Jeremiah Jones, and he needs a piece of equipment, we would start up a little subzone for him right at his shop. And we'd be able to put it in place. And that's the way that works. And our team's been actually meeting with several businesses in Cass County who said, we need some help understanding how this could be a benefit and tool for us. And we've been helping support that. Project announcements, Modern Buggy. It's an interesting shop off of 12. And they're making all these little campers that you can pull behind even a small vehicle. So you don't need a big truck like Jennifer to be able to pull one of these. It actually is small vehicles that come to it, that can pull it. And so $2.6 million of economic impact. This is phase one. We, they got a lot of phases coming behind it. This is a very aggressive owner. He also owns a Flat Rock Grill, if you're familiar with that. So very aggressive guy. Look forward to more growth in this location. And the pipeline. So as we're sitting here saying, okay, what could we be doing that helps grow the budget? Well, we need more investment in real estate. We need more facilities, people growing and expanding like we've been talking about. If these things come through, our tax base starts increasing and we start solving some of our budget issues. So this is why the investment and the work we do is so important. So we see 140 jobs that could be created, 312 jobs to be retained, wage impact of 16 million, capital investment almost $20 million. That capital investment's real money. An economic impact of $35 million in the county. And we have several projects we're working with to try to get them to that point to be successful. And here's what it looks like. One of these projects, actually, we're going to be making an announcement because we just attracted a new company. This is called Foreign Direct Investment from Turkey. They produce a lot of the material that goes in the RV industry. So if you, the RV industry has a lot of shops down there. Some of them are firmly owned by United States companies, and some of them are owned by foreign companies. And they're all putting components into your RV and all your trailers and everything. And this particular company makes a lot of the fiberglass components. They also make the components that go into McDonald's and other things you'll see on walls. So it makes it really easy to clean in some of these cases, but they're going to be coming in. And initially, we thought, you know, it's only going to be just, you know, a small number of jobs. I encouraged them when we met with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, think big here. If you think everything goes well in the next three to five years, what could you do? And they said, we think we can do 250 jobs in the smart park. And I said, that's what you need to be submitting is 250 jobs. So they put it in. They got a very nice offer from the state to help fund their investment in this facility. So we're going to be getting a new company into the smart park, 250 new jobs being created. That's not in any of these slides. It's actually in the pipeline. So that'll be coming down the line as well. And it's actually on the low end is what we predicted at the first time. So that's all good news because that's investment that's going to produce more tax revenue for the county. And so this continues to be something that's important to invest in is the economic future of the county. So part of what we also do is invest in education of our businesses and communities. And our past events that we did this last year is our investors gala we, we held at Venue 132 in Dua Jack. This is a networking event for leaders. And it's, I can't tell you how many leaders I meet with one-on-one, and most of the time they feel pretty lonely in their roles. Having them get opportunities to network with other leaders who are going through similar challenges and problems is such an important opportunity for them. And we've put this, these type of events on to get business leaders together. The other event we did was HR 101. And I don't know if you remember back last year, the state was doing some wonderful things with minimum wage and other things that were going to drive up the cost of doing business for everyone. And so at the time, even though we didn't control it, what we could control is educating our businesses on what these changes could look like. So we brought in some experts from the Human Resources Collaborative, HRC. And they did, they did a free workshop to explain, how's this going to impact you? What do you need to know? So that's part of what we also do is put these workshops together to help the business community. Small businesses particularly, because big businesses have very large HR departments that can navigate all these things for them. But our small businesses don't, and we have to make sure we're helping them. And the third event we did was helping our municipalities through what I call Grant University. And grants seem like it's such a big topic. For some people, it seems real easy. Here in Cassopolis, they've made it look easy. For a lot of communities, it's not. And it isn't. There's a lot that goes into it. You have to first be able to understand what are you need to do, how much money you have set aside to match grants, what's your capacity to execute it. And all these kinds of things are very important for you to figure out. We walked all the communities that attended through a process to understand what they have to do to be ready. And that was a workshop we did, and we brought experts in to teach them and educate them on that day. And as we're wrapping up here, I believe it's also important when we start putting points on the scoreboard, to honor those people scoring the points. Market One had their fifth annual awards event back in June. All of you were invited to it, commissioned, several elected officials were as well, business leaders. And the community champion of the year was Hedro Aluminum. And they've done some remarkable things in how they open up their checkbook to support the community. And I think that should be noted, too, that philanthropy is an important part of social and corporate responsibility. If you got the money there, you've been making money, and it's a big part of it, returning some of it to help those less fortunate's important. Best new business of the year was out of the Wajack, Lake Effect HVAC. And this guy got up and gave just a phenomenal acceptance speech, talking about giving back and teaching people skilled trades. And it was, it was a great speech. And having some of these people, we started actually having them accept the speech and give it, and, and give a speech as part of the acceptance. And it's just amazing what you hear from them. And finally, we had Torch Bear Investors that are recognized, City Dua Jack, Ed Lowe Foundation, Hedro Aluminum, Village Marcellus and Van Daley were all recognized as investors in the future of Cass County. That is what I have for you today. And I think you all have my phone number, so you never have to wonder what we're working on. You can pick up the phone and call me any point in time. But if you have any questions, I'm glad to entertain them today as well.
Which phone number do we have?
Yeah. I don't know if you have the one my mom has, you know?
That's an inside joke with him. I told him, I want the phone number that his mother has. That's the telephone number I want.
Yeah. You know, you got to call up and tell me you love me occasionally, then if, you know, you got that one. Or yell at me, depends what mooch he's in.
Any other questions? Any questions? Thank you very much. Really appreciate that.
Yeah. My, my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we move on to letter of accommodation to Janie Myers for her actions in an iPhone detection crash that saved a life.
So I wanted to just put some information out there, the good things that we are doing at the sheriff's office and at the dispatch center. On this particular event, it was June 23rd, dispatcher Janie Myers was working. She demonstrated great dispatching skills and quick decision-making during a critical incident that resulted in a life saving, a life being saved. Chief West, this occurred in an Ottawa Township, and Chief Westrick wanted to give her a life-saving award, which she received last week. So, but I want to make sure. So, but I want to make sure you were aware that this event took place too. At 18:28 and 35 seconds, iPhone crash detection alert was received in the Dispatch Center. Within 13 seconds, Dispatcher Meyer had the call dispatched, initiated an immediate response from police, EMS and fire. When law enforcement arrived on scene at 18:32 and 55 seconds, they discovered a vehicle that had crashed into a tree, was on fire, and the driver was trapped inside. Because of Dispatcher Meyer's fast call processing and accurate dispatching, emergency responders were able to actively and quickly extricate the trapped driver who was found to have her shoes were actually on fire in the car. So, the timeframe that this occurred was 6:28 and 35 seconds the call was received. It was dispatched at 6:28 at 48 seconds. First police on scene at 18:32 and 55 seconds. Ambulance on scene at 18:34 and 15 seconds. And fire department on scene at 18:40. That's incredible response time and saved the life of this person. So, it's a, I want, it's important to recognize that many dispatch centers across the country are still trying to evaluate how to treat iPhone crash detection. Janie proactively approached the situation, awareness ensured that this call was handled with the urgency it was required. Her actions directly contributed to saving a life that would very easily could have just been lost had there been any delay. So I wanted to make sure that we recognize Janie for this and congratulate her. Who we got next?
Nate Walker and Janie Myers.
Nate, let's step up. So, Dispatcher Nate Walker and Janie were working a shift on March 23rd of 2025. I'm a little slow getting these around, so bear with me here. Dispatcher Meyer and Walker, during a pursuit of a possible armed and dangerous subject, both dispatchers Meyer and Dispatcher Walker demonstrated exceptional calm professionalism and skill under pressure. You maintained clear communication with responding units and provided critical support to ensure a coordinated response. At the same time, Dispatcher Walker was handling a 911 call from a frantic wife whose husband was actively seizing. Dispatcher Walker stayed on the phone with the 911 caller. Dispatcher Meyer managed to do the pursuit, keeping everything under control despite the high stress of both incidents. Amid these two emergencies, you were then faced with the crisis of one of our own deputies crashing a patrol car and becoming disoriented. Unable to provide a location, Dispatcher Meyer quickly located the deputy within seconds and sent help, ensuring that deputy was safe and minimizing any further risk. Your ability to multitask effectively and provide clear support guidance was invaluable. Your actions were instrumental in the successful resolution of these critical incidents and reflect greatly on the department as a whole. Your dedication and resilience are truly appreciated. But if you're not sure what iPhone detection is, if you drop your iPhone, sometimes it'll say you've been in a crash. And we get them quite often and we go and there's nothing there. Somebody left their phone on top of their car and drove off and it fell in the ditch. Or they dropped it in the car or slid across the dash. So, dispatch centers are still trying to figure out, okay, how do we respond to these? You know, is it a waste of time or is it something we need to do? Luckily, we don't consider it a waste of time, so that's a good thing. So I'll have Sergeant Ashley Meyer step up. And again, this one's a little delayed on my behalf. So, we had a pretty bad storm a while back. And on April 2nd, 2025, Sergeant Ashley Meyer, as we navigated the aftermath of a recent major storm in Cass County, I wanted to express my sincere gratitude for your unwavering dedication and resilience during this challenging time. I want to commend you and the road staff for their quick response and leadership during the storm. The team's effort was instrumental in ensuring the safety and security of the citizens of Cass County. Your willingness to work long hours, adapt to changing circumstances and maintain a positive attitude does not go unnoticed. Your dedication and resilience are truly appreciated.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, thank you very much. Next on the list is our financial report.
The report's in the packet. I just wanted to note that we're starting to make some entries preparing for year-end. It will be here before we know it. So, and any questions on the report, don't hesitate to reach out.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none. Unfinished business? Classification and compensation study committee request for the VOC action.
Jen, are we, are we supposed to vote on this tonight or we're waiting until, going to move it forward or?
If you guys are in agreement, you would just move it forward to the next meeting. I know if you had any questions. We've got a bunch of people from the committee here that could answer any questions for you.
Yes. So, for the first one, we all got a, got an email from Judge Beeler and it has a memo. It gives the background and it gives a summary of the report findings and the committee recommendations. So, and then with the recommendations, it says, implement the non-union pay grade step chart, implement the CCIEA, implement the CAS comp report using updated Appendix F. And I think that's like a summary. So I wanted to point out what would be that this is what's recommended from the elected officials only and not from, yeah, so she's coming. Thank you, Judge.
I don't speak for us, but I did type up the memo, so. The memo is from the county administrator, Patrick Jordan, Jennifer Rumpf. At the time, it was written. I understand that Jennifer's now interim, but it was the administration team and the elected officials. So, we all got together and evaluated because we established that class comp committee, if you remember. Well, some of the commissioners weren't here then, but when we both went out for bid, hired them and then had him work on everything. So we did that all together. And so then we had, held several meetings. We had another meeting with Mark Notley after he released the report to get questions answered. And then we all coalesced around making these recommendations to you. And then obviously, you can all do whatever you choose, but that's why we tried to make it comprehensive and provide you with kind of a summary because there was a lot in his report. It's real thick. But I think the thing that I would want to point out is just that, you know, with the cost savings that we had last year with empty positions, et cetera, we're not asking for additional, additional general fund money to be able to implement this. And we feel it is important to implement it because we told the employees, we would look and see, are we competitive? And the expert told us what he thought about that, so that's where we're at on that.
So my question, I guess, will be directed to Jen and maybe to all the commissioners. We have a few, in the class comp study, we have the, what's in amber. I don't know if you don't have that in front of you, but we've got the ones that are highlighted in yellow and then we have some in red. And we don't have to go over them because we all know which positions those are. My, my issue or question is if we, we paid what, $60,000 for this?
Yes.
And we, can we, can we adjust it or is that not, that's not what you all recommended?
No, and we, if you look at page three of our memo, we addressed the green, the red and the other things that were recommended by him. And Mark Notley, I mean, any of the other committee members can get up and confirm this, but he did not recommend that there be an appeal process because what ends up happening is then every position wants to rescore themselves, which is, in my opinion, you know, what ended up being people's dissatisfaction with the last study that was conducted in-house was then people appealed, they rescored, they took it to a committee. But certainly, you all have the right, if you think that's the right way to go, to do that, but the expert did not recommend it.
So if we, if we allow appeals to this, in your opinion or yours, Jen, would that open up, for lack of better words, a can of worms for others? So if we open it up for appeals for specifically five positions, that would open up for everybody else or just those positions?
Well, when you say five positions, I'm not sure what you mean. There, there ended up being, are you talking about the red circle?
Yes, ma'am, the red ones.
Okay. Which, again, our recommendation, which was one of the options that our expert said, was just to say, keep them where they're at and then give them cost of living, which is really what ends up happening to people that are at the top of the pay grade anyway. Once you're at the top of the pay grade, the only thing you get is cost of living. And there's an end at some point with every position. I mean, and I'm only speaking for myself, but I mean, for example, we don't let somebody that starts out at $50,000, they stay here 30 years, they end up making $150,000. There is an endpoint at, that they only get a certain pay with cost of living because otherwise, the county couldn't afford to ever keep somebody 30 years, in my opinion. But Jennifer would know more about that as finance director. But we had actually calculated that out the last time we did class comp. And if you don't have some kind of a hard stop with only cost of living, people that stayed here, like if somebody got hired in here at 20 and worked here until they were 80, I mean, you could end up not affording to pay them their wages. I mean.
Right. So between now and the business being to approve this, if we move this forward, we could look at the cost of living of those people in question or those positions in question, or is that for everybody is getting the cost of living?
Non-union get the cost of living that was agreed to at the time that DB was taken away. Union get the cost of living that's in their contract. And so when their contract is up, that gets renegotiated. So there's really no determination for you all to make on that every year except for you, the commissioners do always decide what the cost of living is. It's going to go to the electeds, et cetera, but the others are figured out for right now.
Right.
But certainly, you have the right to do whatever you want with any of this. We just tried to break it down because there's a lot of moving parts to this whole class comp to know this is where things fall.
And I, another comment, I guess, just to reiterate that this was a unanimous between elected officials, department, or not department heads, but elected officials, the administrator and the finance director.
And HR, yeah.
True. And in full transparency, because I don't want to misrepresent anything, there have been department heads and even staff people in our different areas that have reached out asking, is there going to be an appeal process because they don't believe their particular positions were fairly scored? But having gotten the input from the expert who said, it's Pandora's box if you open it up because I can't remember how many positions we had scored over 100, right?
There was 101 total.
101. So that would mean potentially, because it's not just on the ultimate result. He scored people on multiple categories. I can't remember if it was like nine. But anyway, on a number of categories that had a range of possible scores. So potentially, if everybody started recalculating all those, the only question that I would have would be, well, who's going to determine what score wins? Would we retain him again? And I don't know that he would accept the assignment to do an appeal because he told us he would not do appeals.
Right.
But I don't, I'm not trying to speak. That's my understanding from me on the committee, maybe other people. I know Monica was on it, Jennifer was, but that's what he said. Because he's not going to say, oh yeah, I did do all this work and I did this study. Now that I've talked to you, I'm changing my mind. Because he met with people ahead of time. He reviewed their job descriptions. He read their questionnaires.
Right.
That's not to say, maybe he did get something wrong, but what he told us the solution to that is then you all could decide that there could be a different avenue, but you'd have to decide how to make that fair across the board for everyone.
Well, one, one thing I was talking to the finance director about, that we'd like to make a point of that this class comp study was done on the position, not, not the person.
Correct.
So if, if it's not scored right, the person shouldn't take this personally because it's not about them. It was about the position. And all of that's objective, not subjective.
Right. And it's just like, for example, if I would apply to be the HR assistant to Beth or something, just because I have a law degree doesn't mean that I get to have that counted for that position. Because for that position, having a law degree is not required. And so sometimes those things are hard to differentiate between the person who holds the position versus what's required for the position. But I just wanted to be transparent that we have had people reach out, ask that question. And I'm not diminishing their questions or concerns. I'm just saying, we didn't know of any good way. Once you start saying, okay, well, we'll reevaluate that position, this position, this, you start pulling the whole thing apart and you want to have not only vertical continuity, you want to have horizontal continuity so that people feel like if you're in a structure that your boss probably makes more than you do. I mean, usually at most jobs, a supervisor makes more than the person that reports to them. And so say it's the person that reports to them that asks for the appeal, the supervisor doesn't, does then that person get to make more?
Right.
And I don't mean the person, the position. Does that position get to make more than the supervisor? Because that's, you would have to analyze all those things. You couldn't just do it in a vacuum. But again, I'm not saying it couldn't be done. That's for you all to decide. We just in meeting with the expert, he didn't think that was a good idea.
Got it. Thank you, ma'am.
In overlooking the recommendation, I do believe that we're on the right track. I think it's fiscally responsible in the long term. The cost could be covered by the savings. It's been a very fair process. We're not, the recommendation does not point out any pay cuts. It's a completely transparent pay structure. Hopefully, this in the future will help recruit or retain staff, maybe boost morale as well. I would suggest that we do periodic review to stay aligned with the market. The question that I have, has a union confirmed or support for these pay grade adjustments at all? Has there been any discussion on that?
I mean, I reached out to the CCIA president as far as the courts are concerned and, you know, they, I told her that what we would do is if you all end up saying that you support it, then we would be seeking a letter of agreement from them. But obviously, that would be premature until you all decide if this is something you want to implement. But the, the union president reported to me that they were favorable to looking into that. I mean.
Sure. We're not moving, we're not voting on it to implement it today. We're going to move it forward. And we have from now until our next business meeting for any talks and things.
Because they would take it to their, my understanding is they'd take it to their membership once you all said yes is what we want to do and that they would do it just like we did when we wanted to add Juneteenth as a holiday. Not that it's the same, but I'm saying that's the process.
Mike? Judge, thank you for being here and appreciate you sharing this with us. I think committee did an excellent job. I just got a minor question and, and I know what it is. Longevity. I see you mentioned longevity several, or in your memo. Are we expanding longevity? Because at one point in time, when I was here, we were eliminating longevity. So.
Well, we do have a longevity that's existing. The committee recommended that there be a little bit of an additional longevity payment because the new pay scale that Mark Notley recommended, there were a few positions that their top pay currently, if they stayed on the scale, would end up being lower under his new scale. And so we didn't want to give the message to employees that we don't want them to stay because we do. And it wasn't, in some instances, a huge amount. And so Jennifer calculated out what the difference was. And of course, these are all unknowns. We don't know if somebody who's at step two is going to stay till step nine. We don't know that. But on the scale as it exists now, that's why we made those recommendations so that there would be something so that they would know we're committed to looking at that. And in the future, you know, we don't know what'll end up happening. I mean, we, we did make a change for new hires on the DC to lower that amount. That'll eventually result in some savings. It's just some of these things take a while to go forward. And the market, like Commissioner Barrera said, if in five years I have an open position and it's on the market for eight months and I can't fill it, I may have to go to the Salary Committee and say, hey, every other county's paying more for this position. And at that point in time, the position might have to be looked at. But I'm not saying I have a list of those right now, but I'm just saying market always dictates. Because if we had a key position and we couldn't fill it, we'd have to ask the question, are we paying enough? I don't think anytime class comp is passed, that means that for the next 20 years, that's what the person makes. I mean, but I get it. And that's the thing here. I, Mark Notley even told us, people always, there's people unhappy, people happy and people in between. And, but what we tried to achieve with this was having a neutral tell us what we should do. And you all know the ones that were here when I, when I was heavily involved in doing our in-house one. We did that to save money and we did that because we thought we had a good understanding of our system. But to this day, I know there's people that think the courts were favored because the court administrator, who happened to be me, was heavily involved in that study. And I don't blame them for feeling that way. I don't take it personally. But I'm just saying, the flip side of that is if we pay an expert and they say this is what we should do, then it's hard for us to then pick it apart. Because that's what happened when I worked with our prior county administrator and that team to do our last one. So.
Bill.
But that's my perspective, I'm sure other people have different ones.
Ken?
I just wanted to jump and say too, Mike, on that longevity, sorry, Commissioner Grace, that, that longevity is actually by person. So if they were to leave and a new person were to start, they would get that grade. But some of those people that had already started and like, oh, I will max out at such and such dollar, if that got shortened, it's a, it's a very small amount of people. I think it was five, somewhere between five and seven. It wasn't very many. And a lot of them are still quite a ways away from that step nine, where they would max out anyway and start getting that longevity. So I just wanted to make that clarification that you understood that was actually by the person, since they were already hired and expecting that high range.
Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on the floor to move this to, to move this classification compensation study to the next board meeting?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a support and a roll call?
No.
Do it, please, Ken, do you want, you want a roll call?
We don't need it.
We don't need it?
No, because it's going to move forward, not vote.
Okay, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Under new business, number one, master plan draft.
Well, we heard her in the presentation, so I moved that, we moved that forward to the business meeting.
Support.
I have a motion and support to move the master plan draft to the next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. Uh, we have an appointment of Della Bundle to the Historical Commission for an unexpired term ending July first, 2028. Do I have a motion to move that forward?
I move, we move the Della Bundle to the Historical Commission.
Support.
I have a motion and a support to move Della Bundle to the Historical Commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. We have the appointment of Theron Savannah to the Woodlands Behavioral Health Care Board for a term of ending March first, 2028. Do I have a motion to move that forward?
Somebody other than me.
We do have, uh, go ahead. On this subject, we may have to revert back to the appointments committee. When we're looking at the Woodlands Behavioral Board, there are some criteria that we may have overlooked when we were in the appointments committee, specifically on these two members. As Commissioner Grace brought to my attention, we have to have so many members that are, how did you put it again?
Turn your mic on, Mike.
The, the state laws require that we can have up to four commissioners on the board. We can also have four citizens at large on the board, but then we have to use four people that either receive services, family members receive services, or, so four of them should come from the mental health arena, basically, that is seeking service.
These two, the next two don't meet that criteria.
I don't know if they do or not. I don't think we vetted that.
Right.
So to err on the side of caution, I believe that we probably need to bring those back to the appointments committee, just to be certain.
So I can, I can, I'll make a motion that we'll take three and four and table them here and move them back to the appointments committee for further review.
Support.
And then bring it back to us at the next committee of the whole, all right?
Okay.
Okay.
A motion on the floor to, and support to move, remove three and four and take them back to the appointments committee for further evaluation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Number five, budget adjustments.
Just some budget adjustments as we're preparing for year end. There's autopsies. So our medical examiner was getting pretty close. Just want to make sure that we're not going to go over. There was one I was off by a dollar. We can't be over even by a dollar, so I've got one in there for a dollar. There's also the waste collection and disposal, the hazardous waste event that's getting ready to come up in September. Those are starting to cost a little more, so I just wanted to make sure that there's enough money in there as we get closer to year end.
Okay. Any questions on the budget adjustments?
Move, we move it forward to the next meeting.
I have a motion to move this forward to the next meeting. Do I have support? Support? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, number six, the administrators' recommended budget.
So I had sent an email to all of you. I don't want to just reiterate everything we, we talked about, but I think it's important to discuss. So we went through, after getting the department and elected officials requested budgets, went through and tightened some things up where we thought we could. Those were hard cuts for everyone, but they are aware of those, so we were able to bring that fund balance usage down quite a bit. Things I want to notice as we look at those. The state of Michigan recommends that you are very conservative when you're doing budgeting for your revenues and being more worst-case scenario on your expenditures. So normally, you're not seeing that budget come out the way it's actually budgeted. Normally, it's more favorable. If you look at our history, a lot of times we do budget to use fund balance, and then our fund balance actually goes up. We're not actually using any at all, and we saw that last year even as well. I believe in the last ten years, we've used fund balance once. Some items that are in there is five hundred thousand dollars goes to capital improvements. So we're just moving money out of the general fund and putting it into a special capital improvements. All of you are voting on those capital improvements before they ever get done. So it's really just moving money. That's part of that five hundred thousand dollars. And if I were ever to think about using some fund balance, putting money back into the buildings, making sure that they're structurally sound and taking care of what we have, I think that would be an appropriate use if, if it got to it for using that fund balance. There's also a one-time remainder payment for Midwest Energy for our broadband projects. We had went in on that grant with them. I don't know if everyone got to see the email today. We got some great news that Midwest Energy has finalized those construction projects and starting to get a lot of people online, so very exciting time for a lot of our residents. But that is just a one-time payment. It's our last payment that we owe, but that is included in the budget, so that's not going to continue. One final thing I wanted to talk about, and then I'll open it up for questions, is what they're requesting for expenditures this year is out of the general fund is actually less than we requested in this current year. So, which is pretty incredible when you're thinking about salaries and that type of thing. Any questions?
So with this recommended budget, I said last year that, you know, that people were asking me if I was worried about it, and I told them, when I look at you and you're not pulling your hair out and having a fit, that we're good. So are you, you, you as the finance director, are you comfortable with how we stand and where we stand right now with this current budget?
I am comfortable, and I do know that our elected officials and our department heads are very conscious of their spending. They do a very good job. I've seen some great savings this year. If you remember, Sheriff was finding ways to save a lot of money and bringing new contracts earlier this year. They're constantly looking at ways to save money, and we have a very healthy fund balance. I am very comfortable with this budget.
All right. And when they say, if somebody says, well, I've come under budget, that is, there's, our statutory duty is to come, we have to come under budget.
You're, you can't spend more than authorized by the Board of Commissioners, correct?
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Jennifer, the question I have, we're laying this budget out, and I've been going through some numbers. The only question I have, how much money do you predict that you're going to use out of the unfunded fund to make the next budget whole? How much are we going to have to pull out of there?
For the one that I passed out?
Yep, I believe so.
It's two point five million dollars.
That's what we're going to have to use out of the budget we have right now, or?
That's what it would be projected, if all revenues came in exactly where they were and expenditures were exactly what they were. As you know, it's just not how it normally turns out ever. Usually, we're not using fund balance at all in the end, even though it's projected to. So these, these budgets have looked like this for a while, and at the bottom of your finance report in that green, it shows you, you can see what that fund balance is and that it's grown almost every single year. So I encourage us that we actually do start spending a little bit of it, actually.
Because you said that that, the two point five million dollars is worst-case scenario. So it's really not that, but that's worst case, and it'll come up under, for the last ten years, it's came way under that.
Normally, yeah. It's come very close at times. It's increased at times. And like I said, once, we did actually use some, which I don't think is bad with all the improvements we've been doing.
And you're saying, you, you suggest that we use some of that money?
I think there comes a time when there's maybe too much in savings, too.
Right.
So I think when you look at the budget, sometimes you're like, oh, my goodness, are we taxing people enough? Do we have enough revenues coming in to cover all of these expenditures, or are peoples, you know, spending too much? Another question is, are we overtaxing them if we have savings in there? I think it's, it's right about where it should be. I think they level each other out.
Got it. What do you believe is the biggest risk that could push the fund balance usage higher than the two point five targeted?
I'm sorry, what was that?
What do you think would be like the biggest risk that could move us away from that two point five million? Do we have anything that could potentially come up in the near future? I mean, we've skinned it down from the, the requested budget was three points.
Almost three point two.
Three point two.
Three point one, something.
And your recommended one guided down to two point five, which is great work. Do you think there's anything in there that could risk us to go beyond that two point five?
There's always different things that come up, but a lot of times I'm not bringing it back to, say, one year we budgeted for, I think it was four hundred thousand dollars for marijuana revenue. We ended up getting five hundred and eighty-eight. I didn't bring that back. So a lot of times you're seeing expenditures, because we can't go, go over. But a lot of times I'm not bringing that revenue back. Honestly, it can bounce around. I've actually had people ask me too, where do you think we'll end up? I have a good gauge on expenditures right now, but taxes are due next month. That's, you know, a large part of our revenues. And so anything that's collected sixty days after nine thirty, I'm moving back. I don't have a crystal ball to tell you how, how much taxes are going to come in. My best guess would be that budget number. So it's, it's, it's a guess sometimes.
Great work, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to move the administrators' recommended budget to our next meeting.
So move.
Support.
I have a motion and support to move the administrators' recommended budget to the next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, like sign?
I just want to make a quick note, too, that we'll have the public hearing at the time, so we'll get it put in the newspaper. It's part of statute. So we'll go ahead and get that posted in the newspaper to have that public hearing on that, and so we'll have that at the next meeting, too, before it's passed.
Motion carries. Fiscal year twenty-six to twenty-eight, DeWajac MOU contract for GIS services. Do I have a motion to move that?
Alex is here.
Ah, okay, there he is, right there. Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, so just want to start out by saying that I'm proud to announce that the Cass County GIS Department and the city of DeWajac have reached a tentative agreement to renew our contract for GIS services through two thousand twenty-eight. Over the last three years, we've worked together to migrate legacy data sets into the county, into the city's GIS system. We've helped them maintain and create new GIS layers. Some of the projects that we've worked on include building a utility asset inventory from the ground up, so mapping water, sanitary, stormwater, all of those assets, getting them digitized and getting locations on them. We've also assisted the city with cemetery mapping, mapping out plots, and, you know, where, mapping out all the records and where everyone is buried in Riverside Cemetery. We've mapped out all of the hiking trails in and around the city of DeWajac, which, you know, I know has applications also for nine-one-one and stuff like that, if people go missing or, or get lost out there. And also with lead remediation, we have maintained all of that information and, you know, from a variety of sources and kind of developed a central location where they can track all of that information as the city starts replacing all of those old lead service lines. So as far as the contract goes, there's not a lot of changes in it from the existing contract. There is a slight update to the language as far as the ownership of the data. So the previous contract had the city owning all of the GIS data. In this contract, I've updated it so that any data that we collect out there that has applications for nine-one-one, emergency, regional planning, will now be jointly owned between city and county. And the other update is just the compensation agreement that we have with the city. So the previous contract was seventy-five thousand dollars a year. The new contract has them starting out at seventy-five thousand next year and then gradually increasing every year. So it'll move up to seventy-seven thousand five hundred for two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, and then eighty thousand in two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Questions?
I move, we move that forward to the next meeting.
Support.
We have a motion to move fiscal years twenty-six, twenty, DeWajac MOU contract for GIS services. And a motion to support that. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. For Van Buren?
Yeah.
Van Buren, Cass District Health Department budget request. Aye?
You have to push the red button. There you go.
Got it.
Thank you.
Respectfully, I'm coming to you with a request. I don't know if you guys have the letter in hand for a five percent increase in appropriations this year. I do want to make one small correction on the letter that received. Twenty-twenty-three really should read two seventy-nine, five sixty-six. So what we saw in the past five years, we had a two percent increase, zero, five percent, five percent, zero. And earlier this year in March, we took a quite a big budget hit. A six hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant was pulled from our annual budget. There was some confusion about what that grant was slated for. It was a federal grant that was focused on COVID, which is why it was pulled nationwide, except for us in the state of Michigan and for us locally. That is actually a grant that was primarily used for local communicable disease prevention, things like TB investigations, measles outbreaks, et cetera. And so what it did is it took what was typically a three hundred thousand dollar grant line item. It had gotten bumped up to six fifty during COVID times, but then they wiped the entire thing clean. So we are running at quite a deficit this budget year. We're looking at six hundred and eleven thousand dollars in deficit. It's making us really take a hard look at all of the programs we offer and ensuring that we're, we're acutely focused on our role as a local public health department, specifically what we are slated and by statute and law required to do by the state of Michigan. We, this year, as we move forward, we're looking at separating our dental clinic operations from our public health operations, as our dental clinic is an optional service that we give to the community, which is very important to us, and we hope to maintain it. But we need to make it really clear right now that our appropriations must go towards sustaining a local public health department. As of right now, our dental clinic has been subsidized a bit by county appropriations primarily. And so we're going to be doing a lot of work on that as a board of health. And so, we're going to be doing a lot of work on that as a Board of Health. But because we went stagnant last year, our request is bumped up a bit to 5% this year in the budget. That equates to about $15,000 is, is all we're asking. And then, for the future, and I will share, I just put a little document together. My, my sort of ongoing request is that we consider, as your budget allows, a more consistent appropriations increase, similar to you would as cost of living. As for Van Buren County, that tends to be a pretty standard, 3%, 3%, 3%. Makes it really easy for us to budget as we're looking in the years ahead. But I know that's tough on both of our budgets, when we're having to go ask for a 5% request versus 2%, so on and so forth. And so, I'll share that with you today, but that is, that is the request I put forth.
Questions? I'll entertain a motion to move this forward.
Oh, you, you, you made the motion?
No, I said I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion and I think I'll support it.
All right. All right, there we go. We have a motion and a support on the floor for Van Buren Cass Health Department budget request of $15,000. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. Okay, Conservation?
My thought is, we'll have the budget. I can update it with those numbers if we want to go and move forward with that. That way, we're just passing it all together. It'll be kind of strange to break that up. So, I could adjust that. We could just do it all at once and then it would get passed while doing the budget. If that's what you would like.
Yes.
Then we don't have two separate items.
Yeah.
And then, depending on what you guys decide for the soil, so go ahead and add it in.
Add it to the main budget.
Add it into the budget.
Yes, ma'am. We ain't called for you yet.
No, we didn't.
Don't go nowhere. Don't go nowhere. Don't go nowhere. Well, it's too late.
I'm Charity from the Cass County Conservation District. I apologize that our request to beg came this late. I just found out about it Friday. The last one was sent to you guys in June of 2024. What we're looking from you guys for is, you guys are a big part of our budget. Without you, we wouldn't be able to pay our employees, which currently, we only have five. Our open position is for the contract inspector. We have two full-time, well, actually, right now, it's still three full-time inspectors. One that does the initials and she's also our financial, which we're trying to transition her out of that. One purely administrative, I'm part-time, and then we have a second administrative, which is also part-time. Without you, well, we've asked you guys for $95,000. $80,000 is for the SESC employees and the SESC program. And $15,000 is for the administration portion of that. The, the way that our income is, I guess what I would say, is broken down is you guys, as the county, actually gives us the largest portion of our budget. The second largest portion comes from the SESC permits. We finally have a team onboard that is getting the permits done. They're getting initialized, they're getting inspected, they're getting closed, or they're getting violations. And this is where our money comes from, other than you guys. We also receive money from MDA, which is about $40,000. That pays partially for the administrative portion, financial portion, things of that nature. Other revenue that we have is from our annual tree sale. And that's where the administration portion that we're requesting from you is partially going to go. We usually spend about 20. In reforestation efforts, it shows about $26,000 per year. The money that we spend, the areas that are, our main goal is Cass County Conservation District, is to protect our wetlands and protect and keep from soil erosions. We also want to teach about the programs that will keep the world kind of going for years to come, because we do have a decline in our natural resources. We try to focus on outreach, such as the recycling, decreasing chemical use, water quality, soil health. We have a lot of lakes and rivers and streams around us and a lot of wetlands. And those, that's what our SESC department focuses on. But we also have a lot of agricultural land around us. And that's something that we would like to be able to be involved more with, but unfortunately, due to funding and the amount of personnel we have, that is a challenge and something we're trying to get going off the ground. Do you guys have any questions for me?
That's why we, that's why we wanted you to wait, because there's a spiel before, oh, don't go nowhere. There's a spiel before the public comment that is limited three minutes and we don't do any back and forth for that because it's just a public comment. But we get it, so you're all good, ma'am.
Okay.
We might as well.
Yes, sir.
Turn your mic on, Mike.
I got several questions, actually. How many staff members do you have out there?
We have a total of five.
Five, okay. What's your total budget?
Total budget altogether was $251,000.
And your permit revenue, you said you'd get money from permit?
We do. Last year, it was budgeted, well, what they proposed, and I can't give you accurate numbers this year, because I'm not the finance person yet, maybe down the road, was $83,000. We've got a team, like I said, that's doing a lot, they're doing all the inspections they're supposed to be doing. They've got things under control and they're trying to make improvements to the program.
Last question, how much money do you receive from the county last year in your budget?
Total, $76,000 plus $10,000, so $86,000 total. And this year, we're requesting $95,000, which was our request for last year as well.
Okay, thank you.
Did we provide an increase last year? Someone help me out here.
There's a decrease.
You're looking for a 9.4% increase this year to cover your deficit of $4,500, which, so where's the gap? I guess you're asking for nearly $9,000.
We have one more person is post to last year. We've got one more position filled.
Maybe I'm missing something, but the increase goes from $86,000 to $95,000, but you have a deficit of $4,500.
Correct. We're hoping to have that balanced at the end of the year. However, with the additional person, we're going to have a deficit next year, if we stay at the same levels.
What's that new person? Is he the inspector?
Hello, my name's Charity. I am the new administrator. I am the deficit.
Yeah.
You won't just take a big thank you?
My services ain't free.
You can help blame me because I'm the one that was, had a hand in hiring her, too. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, Mike?
Just one question for our Finance Director. Have they come in and worked with you on the budget or is this the first year hearing of it?
I saw it about 4:30 today.
Okay, thank you.
I have, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, yeah.
You said there's five employees there?
Correct.
How many of them are working on the SESC stuff?
Technically, four out of five. One of our part-timers does 10 hours. One of, that is going to become part-time, is doing 20 hours. And then, we have two full-time at 40 hours. We had a contractor, which we actually hired her to the full-time position. And in that contract, there's still almost 300 hours left, but we're getting things, like I said, squared away. We have a great team at present.
So, it sounds like a two and a half-person full-time equivalent, almost?
Yes, almost three. Two and three-quarters.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to move this on?
No, we don't. That's just public comment. We already talked about it earlier when we had this right here. Oh, that's right. Oh, that's why I messed that all up, because I didn't have it written down. So, yeah, I move, we move this forward.
All right.
Oh, no wonder. No wonder I was at all confused. I thought we were in public comments.
We have a motion on the floor to move this forward to the next meeting. Support?
Yeah. I'm sorry, Charity. I thought, I was looking at public comment.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, now we go into public comment now.
Geez, yeah, now I'm on the same page, yeah.
Limit to three minutes per person. Anyone for public comment?
I'm Roger Boyer. I live in North Porter Township. My post office is Vandelia. Many of you know I'm very active in the Cass County Republican Party, but I want to make it clear, I'm here as a personal citizen. This is not, I'm not representing the party in this, in this concern. And I am concerned very much about the well-being of the county in relation to the administration and the administrator particularly. I recently learned from news that the newly hired county commissioner, or excuse me, administrator interviewed at least once for a job in Florida. He'd been on the job for less than 90 days. What's that about? The fact that he started or continued to look for a job, a different job, when he'd been on duty less than 90 days, shows to me a complete lack of loyalty to you all, let alone me. And I believe it also is a very big lack of integrity on his part. On top of that, the recent allegations regarding discriminatory actions and/or language is more proof to me, you've hired a lemon. I will admit also that I spoke to most of you regarding this position and encouraged you to hire him. I was in there, but I think we were all in there and I think it's partly due to your, the firm that you hired. I don't know who it is, but I know that they solicited candidates, got three, narrowed it down to one, and you offered the job and he, he took it. But they failed you. They failed to vet this person. I don't believe people change that rapidly. He's probably got a history of the same kind of things that were going on before, but they didn't find that out. They didn't bother to do that. They failed you. You need to ask for your money back. I really believe that. Finally, my conclusion is, I believe you should ask for your money back from them and I believe you immediately should dismiss Mr. Patrick Jordan as your county administrator. Thank you for listening to me.
Thanks, Roger.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, we have no closed session. So, I'll start to my left here with Tom Langley. Do you have a board member comment?
Well, nothing really comment. I was at the last Silver Creek Township meeting and found out that when they built the new fire station on Leech Road in 152, it is, it is unmanned, but they, they do have trucks there now. And about a year from now, they're going to reassess the ISO ratings. And so, that should take it from a 10, where I'm located, down to a 5 or 6. And they put that station there on purpose, so anybody that is serviced by any Silver Creek, Sister Lakes Fire Department is well within five miles of a department. So, that should lower their house insurance down tremendously. I just committed for that.
Okay.
I want to apologize to Charity Green again for thinking that you were in the public comment. I didn't mean that. I, I'm the one that added you to the agenda and didn't write it down. So, sorry.
Okay. Nope. Michael, McDavid? Nothing. Sam?
Yeah, to the Cass County Conservation District, thank you for coming today to represent your point. I would recommend then in the future to get with our Finance Director or our Admin Office, especially at this time of year when we're prepping for our budget and when you're asking for a 9.4% increase. To the Van Buren Cass District Health Department, thank you for your presentation today, especially the spreadsheet you hand out with the 3.5% increase. It makes sense when you break it down like that, especially looking at it from 2020. It does look like, when you put it that way, it does make a little more sense. And to Jennifer Rentrow, thank you for all the work you're doing for our county, for our department, for our employees. You know, now this is now the second time we've asked you to step in as interim administrator. So, just thank you so much for everything you're doing.
Al? Mike?
Yes, sir. I have several announcements. Count on Aiden's Free Concert is Friday coming up, the last one of the season. They're going to have a craft show in September. They're also putting new signage up on 60 and Decatur Road, electronic signage, next couple of months. Couple other things, Cass County Animal Control is hosting a rabies clinic this Saturday, between hour of 9:00 and 1:00, or 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Cats and dogs, the veterinarians will be Bergman Small Animal Clinic. They're trying something new. Usually, that's January and February for rabies. Rabies shots are required for all canine, four months and over, not cats. But you can bring cats or dogs and you don't have to live in the county to come there. So, I just wanted to remind everybody, it's a good service, saves you a bunch of money. Vaccine shots are only $25 and that, they have combination vaccines, also distemper, parvo, hepatitis. They're $25 each. You don't have to pay injection fees and office costs. The other thing, just to remind everybody, on September 24th coming up, Cass County Road Commission will be hosting our next used tires and hazardous waste and used outdated electronics there at the Road Commission from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. So, put that on your calendar. You can get rid of tires and chemicals and stuff like that.
September 24?
Yep, September 24th, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. That be it, sir.
Last thing on the agenda is?
I so moved.
He so moved to adjourn. Anyone else? Support? Adjourn.
No, wait, I want to stay here.